Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting of September 27th at 7:00. Welcome to all of those of you out in TV land and our visitors here in the auditorium. I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by law, invidual liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do the roll call. Sparrow Thomo.
Here.
Andrew Murch.
Present.
Aaron DeMello.
Here.
Timothy Messier.
Present.
Catherine LaPiori.
Present.
Wally McKinney, McKinstry? Oh, bad. McKenzie.
Wally is good.
Yeah.
He's also here.
And Martine Uche.
I got your name, right?
Too much about the people in Nova Scotia. Citizens Forum, do we have anyone in the audience today who would like to make a comment? Once again, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the agenda tonight? Hearing none. I have no real chairman's announcements tonight. Tonight, we're going to have the superintendent receiver, Dr. Valar, is going to give us a presentation on the end of school and the opening of school. This is the probably the most important presentation he does, so I'd like all of you to listen very carefully. Anyone who has any questions, I would ask you to please wait until the end to give the receiver full and fair hearing. Dr. Valar?
Well, good evening. Thank you. I appreciate the board's flexibility in rescheduling the meeting. Unfortunately, it was quite under the weather. And I am sorry that Mr. Racine could not join us. I did distribute to the committee three different reports on, excuse me, summary reports of our financials for the last three years. Trying to get ahead for you folks so you can have that information early in the school year. In the past, it's been a few months before you got it, so I thought it'd be helpful for you. Please take a look at it. If you have questions, let me know, and I'll be happy in a future meeting either to address it or have Mr. Racine do so for you. But we wanted to make sure you had that information. I also want to take one second and publicly thank the staff at the high school and middle school. Recently, we had an unprecedented event. I had never seen it in my career where a fire alarm was set off in a bathroom during a thunderstorm where it was pouring rain, buckets of rain. And staff and students were a bit hesitant and kind of wondering what they were supposed to do. Some staff led the way, and the students followed, and unfortunately, they were outside a good 10 minutes waiting to have the building cleared. So unprecedented, I've never seen it before. It is the law, you have to evacuate the building. Unfortunately, there was a student who had set that alarm off in a bathroom. Clearly, consequences are in order. But the staff were great. Students really were fabulous, given the circumstance, and so they all really deserve some praise for that. Lots of families responded, bringing clothes. Some kids went home. It was a complete disruption of the day, unfortunately. But again, very impressive in how people handled themselves in a circumstance that you just couldn't make up. So let's hope that that never happens again. But my thanks to the staff for what they did and to the students for their patience in doing the right thing. So that was quite an adventure for all of us. I will try to pick up my comments just because it is a very long presentation. It's good 30-plus slides that I have shared with you this evening. Trying to give you a summary of both a quick closeout of last year, the impact of the pandemic, talk about some of the major issues that we're facing with attendance, graduation issues, speak to our climate data and kind of get into what we're doing this school year and reaction to all of those things. So I'm going to try to move it along a little bit this evening. Once again, for really now the fifth year in a row, we have utilized all of the funds that were given to the school district, all but two cents. And yes, there's a little bit of irony there. But we were once again able to expand all of the budget. Obviously, we need all the resources we can get to make an impact. Again, you have copies of fiscal year 2020, 2021, and 2022 in packets for you this evening. When we talk about the pandemic, it is a continual discussion point here as we try to move forward as a district. Myself, just recovering from being quite ill now, have personal experience. It has definitely had a major impact on our students. There's absolutely no doubt here in Southbridge, we've seen an impact in increased poverty, increased trauma, students struggling to be back in school, young children struggling with the social requirements of school. We have seen record poor attendance. I was on a call today, statewide call, with a lot of embargoed information, but I can say that statewide attendance is an issue all districts suffered from this past year at significant rates that were just horrible of chronic absenteeism. Again, just about everyone has had staff turnover. I'll speak more specifically about ours. We have seen fewer applicants for positions. We've obviously had to increase our salaries, and we face increased costs with record inflation. So it's quite a time, a challenge for us. Throughout the pandemic, and this slide actually goes to 2020, 2021, but I checked the latest data that was just released, and we still hold at 90% low-income students in the district. So what this slide shows you is that back in 2002, 2003, we were 50% of students of free and reduced lunch, low income. And we're now at 85%, and 90% of our kids are considered high-need students, meaning special education, EL, English Language Learners, or poverty. So we definitely have seen a significant demographic shift in our students, and it seems as if the pandemic accelerated some of that. Also interesting, and I've shared some of these data last year with the town council, and I think I've shared some with this committee, but for a reminder, the student body has shifted dramatically over the past 20 years, almost doing a complete demographic flip in the sense that the percentage of students who are Latino or Hispanic has gone really from 35% now to 64, 65%. And the percentage of our students who represent Anglo or whites has essentially done the opposite, going from 60% to 30%. So there's been a massive shift in the student body here in our schools. As we look at attendance this past year, extreme impact by COVID. And in fact, last year, I feel we were more impacted by COVID in many ways than the year prior. And it's amazing to think we've been at this for more than two and a half years now, dealing with schools with an unprecedented pandemic. Our chronic absenteeism rate is adjusted on this slide. The state made a change in how they gathered the data around chronic absenteeism last year. Typically, it's 10% of the time or 18 days in a school year, you would be deemed chronically absent. That can be two days in a month. Last year, for state reporting purposes, and what this slide shows you, is based on the 20% rate for chronic absenteeism. So that's 36 days out of 188. That's a significant amount of time. As you can see, our secondary schools, the high school and the academy particularly struggled with attendance. And you can also see in the graph at the bottom, the red line actually represents the past school year. You can also see that you have 2020 in the middle and 2021 is a low purplish-blue color. We started out pretty good last year, and then we started to plummet pretty quickly. And then when we got to December and January, it was hard times for student attendance and staff attendance. I had recollection of many days, excuse me, where we had schools with 50% of the staff sick, and we were still open. Kudos to our staff for the hard work and our leaders for making that work. But attendance is a significant issue. You can't learn if you're not in school. So obviously, you might see in this red line here towards the end of the year, it picks up a little bit. There was a lot of effort in the schools to reach out to families and try to curb that. We are now, this year, out of the gate already having conversations with families around attendance. Again, the perspective I share with principals, excuse me, is two days in a month, you're chronically absent. So we've already had plenty of opportunities to have long lists of students who've missed two days since we've started school, and so our outreach for that is well underway. I wanted to point out for folks that a lot of the information I'm sharing about last year can be found, and a lot, even more specific information in a longer report, on our website. If you go to the About tab, you'll see receivership documents. And then listed there are the receivers' annual reviews. So this is a review conducted by the department. And part of that process is a summarization of our progress and our struggles. And so there is a document that summarizes the 2021, 2022 school year. So you certainly can take a look at that. It's available, as are all the previous documents. Highlights of the report, again, having seen what our staff and students have gone through, you know, reopening the schools and allowing them to be a safe place for kids to go to all of last year, was again a herculean effort on staff's part. Certainly, we could have said two and a half years ago that we were going to stop our efforts to improve and just hunker down and kind of survive. That's not what our staff did, and I'm very proud of the fact that we have continued to make, some places, significant progress in improving our capacity to deliver instruction, our climate, our culture, literacy, and numeracy across the district. So people didn't take a pause. They kept going, kept growing, despite some significant difficulties. You know, part of our success, I think, has been some of the implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, which I'll speak to a little bit more detail later, a focused approach to helping kids in academic and social areas, our City Connects initiative, which again is a data-driven social work approach that I think has been very helpful to students at this time and families, our continued efforts to keep kids with Chromebooks and update Chromebooks so all students have access to technology. We improved our Munis implementation, adding an HR module, which is going to, has helped us track staff, help with hiring, and you'll learn that we've done plenty of hiring. Implementing a robust student intervention model, trying to address credit loss, grade recovery opportunities for our high school kids so we can maximize high school graduation rates at a time when high school students were really struggling to get things done and come to school. And then I'll speak more about this, but we have seen 180-degree turnaround in our middle school, and I think that's a very, very bright sign for our future. I have, you know, I do watch meetings and pay attention, and I know there are folks out there saying we graduated 50 kids and we spent $30 million doing that. Both statements are inaccurate. So last year, we graduated 94 kids. We have a small high school, so it's actually proportionate to the size of the high school. We do need to improve our graduation rate. When you have nine students who drop out of a high school class of 94 or just over 100, that percentage isn't good, and we need to do much better. Candidly, I've taken some pretty aggressive changes at our high school. We have an entirely new guidance department. We've added to their capacity. We have new leadership at the moment. We have added a group of folks that we're calling student counselors. They're not guidance counselors, they're more like advocates. We have four who are dedicated to working with our freshmen to make sure that the freshman year goes off without a hitch. We've learned, and the research will tell you, freshman year, if you fail courses, your likelihood of dropping out of high school is dramatic. And so we have invested heavily into trying to support our freshmen. Now, we're on September 27th. I was at the high school today, and the good news is our high school freshmen have the best attendance rate of any class at the high school at the moment. I'm not sure it's this group of people and the work they're doing, although I can say I observed several of them working with kids in the classroom, and I was really impressed. So we'll track that, and we'll see whether or not that investment's worth it. But we're taking it seriously. We need to have a change in these data at our high school. But it's also important to point out that Southbridge Academy graduated seven seniors, which is the highest number ever graduated out of the alternative high school. And they also were able to participate in the larger graduation that I know some of you attended. Another interesting point here, I just want to make sure I didn't jump ahead too fast yet. If you look at last year's data, and really over a period of time, we have seen a pretty dramatic drop in suspension across our schools. Eight percentage points from 2018, 2019, that's my first school year here, to 2021, these are state data points, we dropped eight percentage points. It's like a 300% rate of change. It's a significant change, going in the right direction. We attribute this to the work with positive behaviors interventions and supports across the schools, training on restorative practices for our older students and staff, trying to hold students accountable for their behavior, but obviously have importance to being in school whenever possible. Importantly, and I'll share some of this again in a few minutes, but climate survey data also reflect positive climate. So it's not a matter of gaming the system here. We're talking about authentic, positive changes in our climate. The example I want to share, because it's just so dramatic and it really needs to be called out, is our middle school. In 2018, 19, our middle school, there were 443 out-of-school suspensions issued to 146 students, representing a loss of 786 days of school in 2018, 2019. At that time, the school was chaotic and disruptive. I've never hid that. I've brought people on tours. It was not a good place at that time. In 21, 22, last school year, 42 out-of-school suspensions issued to 29 students, representing 114 days. That's amazingly dramatic change. Now, that in itself, anyone who's an experienced person with schools can say, well, that's easy to do, you just stop suspending students. But that is not the solution we're seeking. We want to change behavior, right? We want a school that becomes a positive school, where there's still going to be instances where children have to be excluded from school. As you can see, we had 29 instances of that last year. There's a larger focus on having kids stay in school. But what you have to, I believe, you also have to look at and triangulate some data around these points to see if it's an authentic change or not. And so this slide represents the average referrals for major disciplinary events at the school from 2018, 19, every school year up until the current school year. And what I draw your attention to, obviously, you see in 2019, 20, and 2018, 19, large bars, I mean, tons and tons of, you know, over 40 and 50 referrals to the office a day for major events. Well, the last two years, this year, I should say, we're off to the same good start. 21, 22, you see a significant drop. Now, these are teacher-generated referrals for major events in the school. They're not happening because of professional development for our teachers, restorative practices with our students, accountability, and teams of people that have processes in place that now address issues with middle school kids. And I was a middle school principal, let me tell you, being in the middle school, you're oppositionally defiant by nature. It's like, it's challenge time. And so it's a place where you have to get your culture right. A skeptic might say, well, still, maybe you're telling teachers not to refer people. Well, then we have climate survey data that teachers fill out independently, anonymously, families fill out, and students fill out. And what the climate survey data show is the school has, particularly amongst staff, mind you, but it's a four-point scale, so we're close to the top of that scale. But the climate has improved dramatically. Now, there are members of the town council in the last couple of years that have come and seen this firsthand. I'm sure we'll have an opportunity. We are planning having a meeting at the middle school. I was there doing a walkthrough very recently. It passes the eye test and the numbers test. Like, there's accountability at our middle school. Our staff are doing phenomenal job. They have great leadership. It's a team, and it's working for kids. So that's something I think people need to understand. I know when I arrived in town, there was a lot of talk about what are you going to do about that middle high school, and the middle school in particular. Well, it's headed in the right direction. What we now need to do is build off of the fact that now kids are students in the classroom, teachers are able to teach regularly, consistently, hallways are orderly, cafeteria is orderly, things go the way they should go without disruption on a regular basis. But we have to turn the corner on instruction. We need to get better outcomes academically, but this is the foundation. This is critically important. And the good news is we're seeing that this effort is working. As we speak of the foundation, I wanted to share a little bit about the academics that were challenged, our challenges in academics at our elementary schools in particular. So we use several different assessment systems. One that's very important to us is the DIBBLES assessment. This is a measure of reading and reading comprehension skills. There's a whole bunch of different subtests. What we have here is what's called the composite score. It's essentially the best gauge of a student's reading ability with a composite, not quite averaging, but combining scores from various tests across the school year. What you're going to see is as we start in kindergarten, a lot of kids are in the red. As a matter of fact, 70% of our students started last year in intensive support. We ended the year with 38 students requiring intensive support. Now, it's also important to know that each iteration of the DIBBLES assessment, from the beginning to the middle to the end, gets harder, so it's a moving target. So you could theoretically start on the low end of the green and end up closer to the red if you didn't develop throughout the year. You're supposed to grow, and your score should get better as you move throughout the year. So it is sometimes hard to interpret these data when you look across three different tests. When we look at grade five, we see 62 students, or 40%, are intensive, and ended with 71 or 48% of our students in intensive. And that's a good example of what I just described. Test gets harder as a year goes on. That means we're sending 50% of the kids out of fifth grade on this iteration are below grade level as they go into sixth grade. So that's a heavy lift. These kids that are in fifth grade, two and a half years ago, were coming out, what, second grade into third. So we've seen some real disruption in student learning. There is a flip side. When we look at kindergarten, 87 students, 61% are at or above grade level at the end of the year. So that's even after, again, these aren't our strong scores by any means, but 61% of our kindergarters left school last year at or above grade level, or starting first grade at or above grade level. What's critical for us if we're going to turn around K-12 is to increase that percentage in every grade level as kids move up. And what I always want to point out to people is that every grade level on each of these tests, there are numbers of students who are at or well above grade level. So any misnomer that they're, you know, no one's learning at high levels, that's not true. There are lots of children who are performing very well at above grade level. But we also have a large percentage of students who are still struggling. Super important. I know, it looks like you wanted to ask me something.
Just real quick, how long are these, how long are these tests that they're taking?
The DIBBLES?
Yeah.
So it's a good question. I don't have the exact time, but we're talking about a test that a kindergartner has to be able to be assessed, so a teacher delivers it to them three times a year. So likely minutes.
Okay.
Because five-year-olds can't sit for a long time to be assessed. As they get older, it takes longer. But again, so the stress point here is, as we wait for the embargoed assessments and mastery scores and stuff, I can look at this and say, I know, we're not going to see any major jump forward. We need to make sure that we get a larger percentage of kids out of the red every year to every grade level moving forward to build on that. That said, when we look to some middle school data, they're still starting to get things done at our middle school because we have created some interventions that are working. And how do we know that they're working? Well, if you look at the August left-side pane here, 376 kids were assessed. This is using Read180's Lexile Level Assessment. It's electronic reading software that we use. What you can see is 12% of our students at the middle school through this assessment were advanced students above grade level, 12%. But 44% were below basic, or so well below grade level. By the end of the year, what you see is now we've added 10% of the kids to the advanced, so they've moved to 22%. You've reduced the number of kids below basic, you've reduced the number of kids at basic if you increase the number of students at proficient. Now, that's groups of students who still struggled and had years prior of school disruption, but those are some significant increases that we've seen at our middle school. The intervention block is working. The fact that they have kids reading silently every day, they have classroom libraries that we purchased, so all the English classrooms have libraries that kids can choose books from, they're expected to read, they do read, they're really building a culture around literacy, it's making a difference. We haven't arrived by any means, but we should be proud of the efforts of our students and our staff because they are moving kids on assessments. Again, 10% more kids at advanced, 22% over 12% is significant growth. That's a big shift over the course of a school year in English Language Arts. In mathematics, it's a very similar story. The percentage at above grade level and the reductions of the student below grade level are pretty obvious. We want to see more. This is using iReady, which is built by Curriculum Associates. iReady is an online assessment system completely coordinated with our mathematics curriculum. So it's very helpful for the staff to be able to see where kids are, and then it also generates some intervention as well. But we have begun to see that we can move the needle academically in mathematics with our middle school kids. So a quick summary of the 21, 22 year. Despite the pandemic, our teachers, our leaders, really worked hard, and they keep improving the schools. You know, for me, the measure of a school is what I send my child there, and you better believe my kid would be at that middle school, but Jeff House is the principal any day of the week. Our elementary schools are phenomenal. They're really nice places to be. They're happy places. ERS, just to highlight them this year, I mean, what a change at ERS. They're having all these family events. You know, they just had snow cones out and families, hundreds of people show up, and they have book machines on order from, we'll learn about a grant, but literally a book vending machine for kids to be able to earn and get access to and, you know, win books. And we're revitalizing the library. We've ordered a whole bunch of new library books for them, and the bulletin boards, everything, it's just happy, and that's the way it should be. And that was one of the reasons why Kelly Jalino was selected to be principal, is, you know, she and I agreed out of the gate, top priority is to happy kids, and then urgency around their learning. And that's what she's trying to bring, and we're seeing a change there, and that's our foundation. So for me, I feel really hopeful. A couple good years, if we can not have this COVID name and just have kids in school, I think we're going to start to see some movement. There's no doubt about it. But attendance, the trauma from COVID, and just, there's a lot of things going on in some of our students' lives, not all of them, but many, and there's real learning loss that's occurred. So these are sobering things that we are trying to build interventions around. So these are sobering things that we are trying to build interventions around and prioritizing so that we can get back to just completely improving. That said, looking forward to this year and what the budget looks like this year. So in our fiscal year 23 budget presentations last spring to the town, you know, we were lucky as a, as a town to receive $2.1 million in additional Chapter 78 state aid for education. And we were able to work collaboratively with the town council and the Subcommittee, Education and Human Services Subcommittee, to come up with recommendations around using the increased funding, not only to help the bottom line of our budget, which is greatly appreciated, but also to set aside some money for capital improvements, $300,000 that were needed. Also setting aside about $300,000 to do an RFP, to hire a firm, to help us come up with a plan to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for renovations on our schools. We need doors, windows, roofs badly. And as a reminder, we will qualify likely for 80 cents on the dollar, so that's 80% of the cost can be covered by the state for very expensive repair work. So us nickeling-diming things, we pay full, or we can pull it all together, and this is what the council agreed with us to do, and get a comprehensive package, and hopefully save 80 cents on the dollar, which to me makes a lot of good fiscal sense. So we'll be doing that RFP very soon. It is going to be a lengthy process because of the value of that contract, and then the work that they have to do is complicated, but essential if we're going to submit an application to the Massachusetts School Building Association, or Authority, excuse me. Also, out of these funds, about $181,000 were set aside for the town to utilize in reducing the cost of health insurance for our employees. So prior to this budget cycle, our employees would have to pay 40% of their insurance premium for their health insurance, and the town would pick up 60%. Now, the town picks up 70%, and the employee pays 30. It matters when I'm trying to hire staff. It's a big deal. That 60-40 hurt us when we were hiring staff. Many times, people would be like, whoa, because it's, you know, a family health plan, top of my head is at least $25,000 a year. And if you're picking up 40% of that, that's, that's real money coming out of our employees' pocket for sure. We're less competitive at that rate. So the council had the foresight to say, you know what, we have to approve the town manager's plan to reduce the insurance costs for our employees, and I think that has helped us at a time when hiring has been very difficult. So when we look at our budget expenditures over the last few years, I do think it's important to point out in this, this slide. Over the past three fiscal cycles, we've seen increased funding from Chapter 70. That's the state aid to the town. This has allowed the town to reduce its overall contribution to education. So now Southbridge is paying a little over $8 million. Oh, and I'm sorry, folks, just dawned on me. Do you have a separate sheet that's clipped to your presentation? Because this slide was given to me late after we had put together your package. So you'll find it, it should be clipped underneath a black clip that you have, and you should see these two slides. My apologies, I should have pointed that out. I saw confusion over there. So you do have a copy of these slides. So what I'm saying is, with the increases in state funding, the local cost has dropped, and Southbridge is currently paying a little bit over $8 million out of your local taxes for the schools. Now, there's a total of $39 million in funding that come to the schools for this fiscal year. When we get done with all the COVID-19 grants, and we get done with non-recurring grants, we get done with special education, Title I grants from the federal government, and then you'll learn some of the grants that we've sought out just from our staff. But the local tax dollar is accumulating really less now, is paying less to education than it was three years ago. For folks who are worried about the bottom line in your taxes, that's really good news. But there is a caution to all of that. And the caution is we are getting very close to the minimum state funding requirements at the local, and that will take away flexibility for the award of any budget request moving forward if we get to that amount. And we've been talking with the town council about this for several years now, so this is not a surprise, and the town manager understands it. But I just think it's important for people to realize how this breaks out. That is a massive amount of state aid and grants in our budget, and a much smaller amount of local taxes. And this is just another way to look at that same point, basically, just percentages. But the town's portion of funding the public schools over the last three years has dropped 4%. So again, it's not a bad thing. We have a lot of funding. I'm not sitting here saying that funding is our issue at the moment. COVID-19 funding from the federal government has been generous, and it's allowed us to do a lot of really good things for our kids. But we have to be mindful what the future looks like and what the town's contributions will be. And so that's always something that we have to keep in mind as we build out the next fiscal year's budget, fiscal year '24. We'll be talking about minimum state spending requirements, I'm sure. Capital needs, I mentioned this a little bit with the MSBA conversation, but we do still have a lot of unmet capital needs. We have a plan, this is, you know, which is great, and we're going to do the RFP, and we'll get a firm on board. But from that point on, there will have to be a lot of conversation with the town council about what options are going to be viable for the town. You know, even when you're getting 80 cents on a dollar, you're still talking expensive projects, so you have to come up with money. And so that will be an important conversation for us to engage in. I remind folks, over the last couple of years, we've had catastrophic failures. We had a $170,000 roof problem at West Street School. Last year, we had asbestos break loose off of a boiler down in the basement of Coal Ave. Small piece of asbestos turns into almost $100,000 of repairs because it's asbestos, and there's only certain ways you can handle that, certain equipment. And we had to work very closely with the state authorities on that to be sure that we were up to code and how we managed that. So addressing these issues, keeping them in our forefront of our mind, I think is going to be critically important as we move forward. Again, there is a plan, so that's great. You know, having an idea of what you're facing is very important as you step into this, but certainly we could have a catastrophic heat failure, roof failure, at any point in almost any one of our schools, likely with the exception of the middle high school. Let's see, so enrollment. Enrollment figures are in flux until October 1. October 1, they get locked in. So whatever you have in October 1 is what the state then is going to utilize as that figure to calculate Chapter 70 and any grants and funding associated with the budget, and a lot of other data points that they use enrollment, you know, to calculate. At the moment, the snapshot I have here, actually I pulled last week, and it's from one of our dashboards, we'll speak about that in a minute, but at that point, we're at 1781. You can see the high school at 456 kids, down to our smallest school, which was Charlton, at 251. Not listed is the academy, which is 32 or so students, so that's actually the smallest program. These numbers will fluctuate a bit until next week, and then they're going, well, the weekend, and they're going to be locked in. So we'll see where we end up, but it's going to be likely very close to this number. Usually it all works out. I have spoken about trends in school choice before in the spring, but I wanted to clarify because it seems to me, again, that maybe some folks have misunderstood my comments around this. I think it's very important information. When we look at this chart, what we see is there's been a gradual reduction in the number of families choosing to send their children out of Southbridge. So actually, 50, 55 students fewer leaving the district to go to other school districts, and we have an increase in families choosing to send their kids to our programs. So to me, that's a positive trend that we should be embracing and happy about. I think school choice is a great option for families, and I don't begrudge anyone for making choices on how you educate your child. It's highly personal, and choice is a good thing for families. But I see my job as to make the Southbridge Public Schools a great choice, a competitive choice. And as I see these data going in the right direction, that is good news to me. We want to be competitive. I know there have been questions around staffing. In our budget book, I grabbed these charts from that, but you can get detailed information based on our budget projections on the number of staff at every site, so I wanted to remind folks that we have that information, and you can see that there. We'll do an accounting of that again as we go into the budget cycle. Now that we have, as you can see here, we had the final numbers in fiscal year 2020 and 2021, and then we had to revise for 2022, and then the proposed for this year. We're going to try to report out, building off of that historical data as we build next year's budget, so there'll be that trend line, so folks can see where our funding, you know, is going to, which is largely people. People are the most important part of education. This summer has been a busy summer for staff, for hiring staff, and it's not just in Southbridge. We've all heard about the great resignation, and lots of people taking stock, I think, in their life's work and thinking after this pandemic, you know, do I really want to do this anymore? Not in just education, but in all kinds of walks of life for sure. But we have seen, you know, people leave. And so as you can see in this table here, we kind of break down the hires that we've had for the fiscal year '23, this current year. And then, you know, 54 certified teachers, licensed teachers. I know folks were interested in waivers, and there was some discussion about that. We have less than, approximately, I should say, eight people who are going to require waivers. It does not necessarily mean they're not licensed, but they may need a waiver to teach in the content area that we need them to work in. For example, I know a social studies teacher who's teaching English Language Arts because we were unable to find an English Language Arts teacher. So that number is not huge, at eight waivers. You always want licensed people teaching in the content areas that they work in. It's a, it's an important part of things, but it's certainly across the state, there's going to be lots of districts writing waivers this year, or asking for waivers from the department. So we've hired over the summer a total of 94 people. That's a lot of hiring in our little HR office, for sure. Our trends on staff retention, you know, the district's staff retention numbers have kind of been in flux since 2014. We most recently hit a peak of about 77.8% in 2021. This year, looks like we're at 65.8% retention. It's still better than all the first few years of my tenure here, where we're at like 59.9 and 57.4, but clearly not where we want them to be. It's important, you know, the conditions in 2022 are a lot different than they were in 2017, 2018, so when people are choosing to leave a district now, I think there are some, again, COVID and some, you know, real major life battles, struggles that people are having around what do they want to spend their time doing, that may have impacted some choice. Also, though, I think, you know, there are some other factors that are really important. And so when we look at staff retention, to me, what I have learned in my career is that it does start with consistent leadership. I think, you know, for Southbridge, the fact that in February, it'll be my completed five years, having stable leadership at the top, but then building principles when you talk about staff, is super important. I just said this today to a principal. The staff don't view me as the person they work for. They work for their principal. They see their principal every day. That's the person they're likely to have a really personal relationship with and know more about each other. And so that's where you're going to retain folks. I look at schools when we're losing staff, and, you know, there is a relationship between the tenure of the leader, the success of the leader, and staff retention. It's an important metric to look at. And so that does impact some decisions at times around staffing for leadership. We need leaders that inspire teachers and support teachers. Teachers are our most important asset when it comes to having children learn. And so there's inspiration, support, and just solid decision-making that can go a long way to making staff feel like they're valued at a school. Also, I think important and, and good feedback we've received from many people that we've hired over the last few years is professional development for teachers, and we really offer some super professional development opportunities for our teachers. We have relationships with great organizations. They're not inexpensive to have these groups working with teachers, but Hill for Literacy is a very well-respected literacy organization. University of Connecticut's PBIS initiative is nationally known. Looney Mathematics has a great reputation across Massachusetts. Curriculum Associates is working directly with our elementary teachers on their math curriculum. The list goes on here, but, you know, we provide professional development for our staff regularly across the school year. We have new teacher orientations. We had basically two weeks of training in the beginning of this year, and then we also have early release every Wednesday. And so the students go home an hour early, and staff gets Wednesdays, and some Wednesdays are long Wednesdays, so the extra hour, they'll stay later. Others are just a normal day. But their professional development is tied to the school goals and the district's objectives, and it's, the, the concept is to make it very relevant for the teachers. So it's things that they need to know, things that make their job easier to perform. And I think that helps with retention. We've also come, developed a partnership with the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth that's providing teachers in district. We had a cohort that were able to get a master's degree through the program, taking courses in our schools, which is very convenient for a teacher. They're now working with our English Language teachers, our EL teachers, and our dual-language teachers to help them become licensed through providing coursework for them. Again, coursework that they can take either remotely or here in the district. Things like that, I think, go a long way to support teachers. I also think recognition of our teachers and making sure that they're aligned with our mission matters. And we have developed programs like Early Career Distinguished Educators, so teachers in their first or second year that have just been phenomenal. We recognize them, we publish, you know, papers about them, share it with the staff, and they get a financial increase at the end of that school year, recognition, and they move basically up a step. We also have the Advanced Teacher Recognition. So teachers who are selected by their peers through a pretty rigorous process, then recommended to me for final selection, can move to $76,000 on a pay scale. So you might be a $54,500 teacher, year three, you're selected to be an advanced teacher because of the quality of your work, is recognized by administrators and teachers. You may now be earning $76,000 here in Southbridge in your fourth or fifth year, which is much higher than most districts. And then you're also asked to be a leader and contribute to some of that professional development, some of those initiatives in the school. And I think that status and responsibility also helps retain people. So we're trying to build these structures in ways that make it a great place to work. Admittedly, we still struggle in some of our schools with consistency of leadership. That's got to get nailed down if we're going to really achieve this and get to our 77, 87%. Like, wouldn't it be nice to get back to where we were at one point? Some of our schools are well on their way today. And so these, these are some of the steps that I think are important for retention. We also, this summer, instituted a procedure. We knew we had some teachers that were being courted by other districts, and we were able to engage in negotiations with those people to try to keep them. You know, we were offering matched salaries to teachers for special education from other districts and hiring bonuses, so we did need to try to find a way to retain folks who were higher up on our pay scale as well. You know, it's tricky because staffing is your most expensive resource. So we want to make it sustainable, but we don't want to lose people who are great contributors to what's going on here in the district. So it's something we continue to work with, very important. I do want to point out that, you know, in preparing for this and looking at some of the statistics, you know, the diversity of our staff has improved. So when I arrived, just at that final year, I should say, 2017-18, so I was here in 18, but the district had about 7.8% of its staff is Hispanic or Latino. Now, clearly, with 65% of your students being Hispanic or Latino, it's a good idea to have teachers that students can identify with. Quality first, of course, but we always can identify with. Quality first, of course, but we always want to have a diverse teaching staff. What we've seen is, over the years, we have now moved to 19% of our teachers as being Latino or Hispanic teachers here in the district. And we're well above the state average of 5%. So as the state is trying to find ways to recruit minority teachers, we are succeeding at a much higher level than the state is. I think some of this has to do with our programs that help EAs become licensed teachers. We're finding ways to help folks become teachers through less traditional means, but still at very high quality. So I think that's a data point Southbridge should be proud of, and I expect that to continue to grow. Just a quick statistic that, you know, as people were looking at staff retention across the country, there is a relationship, high-poverty schools, high-need schools, like our schools in Southbridge, across the country have had larger numbers of vacancies than they've seen previously. It's not something that's unique to us, for sure. And it's across the Commonwealth. And again, it hit urban districts more than it's hit suburban, but everybody is feeling the pinch, there's no doubt about it. Special education teachers are very difficult to find. We're still looking for some. If anyone knows quality special education teachers, we will give them a $10,000 signing bonus. Now, that's paid out 50% after their successful first 90 days and 50% at the end of the school year. I'm not really interested in just giving away $10,000. I want to make sure the people are successful. But we desperately want to hire quality special education teachers. I know from my own personal experience, my wife is a teacher of 26 years, and she's now in a program to be a special educator in Connecticut. That state has 1,400 vacancies in special ed. It's not a Massachusetts thing, it's a national thing. It is something we're struggling to fill, for sure. Word languages and technology are also difficult. So as we look at program improvements, so we've seen our budget numbers, we've seen some of our staffing issues. I wanted to take a couple minutes just to explain really the philosophy behind how we're trying to improve. And you've heard repeatedly, I know, for years, climate and culture, literacy, numeracy. But, you know, what's the theory behind all that? Or what are we trying to do? Well, what we're trying to do is create multi-tiered systems of support. So if you see the pyramid here, the bottom tier, green, should be your normal, large percentage of your student body who can do all right with just typical teaching structures in place. A classroom teacher, good curriculum, and the students are successful. Then you have some students who may need some more specialized types of instruction or intervention for a whole host of reasons. They may or may not be students who have special education needs or 504. They could just need a little different help and support to be successful. That tends to be your yellow group. And then you have the top of that pyramid, which is, you know, red, which is a color often associated with, you know, difficulty. But these are children that really need specific programs to be successful in school. Now, our pyramid, when we started this work, was what we'd say inverted. You had larger numbers of kids with higher needs at the bottom than you should have. And a lot of that was largely because of inadequate curriculum and not enough professional development. You change the professional development, provide quality curriculum, and some support services, and you can start to invert that pyramid back to the way it should be. And that's what we're working on. So when you hear multi-systems, tiered systems of support and PBIS, well, what is that? Well, it's finding different ways of programs to support learners in classrooms. We try to do it in the most normal, typical way as possible, but it may also mean different programs in different classrooms and having, as I mentioned, that ninth-grade program where we have ninth-grade advocates sitting with kids in classrooms, tutoring kids, calling families, making sure kids are coming to school. That is a type of support for tiered students who were identified based on data prior that suggested they were going to struggle in ninth grade. So we're trying to give them support so that they can be most successful. So it's an example of a tiered system of support. So this is happening in the curriculum and it's happening with behavior, right? So it's both social, emotional, and instructional. And it's very important that the point to which we can meet each kid's needs, the we will do better, the better we're able to do that. So that's really the philosophy behind what we're trying to do. And over time, in the district, in these areas, we have increased our capacity. And I know this is very small and hard to see. That's why I printed out copies, hoping later on you'll get your magnifying glasses if you want to really dig into it. Because, yeah, I know my eyes fail me as I get to older age every year. But what this graph is trying to show us here is that we have been building on our capacity year after year by remaining focused in these areas. Jumping into a whole bunch of other things, you can't continue to build your capacity. And one example I'll share is, like, you've heard me talk a lot about climate and culture. Well, a year ago, we suffered a significant loss in climate and culture. We had been building, we added a position, we had a district leader whose role was to help coordinate our positive behaviors, interventions, and support, and they had good background in it. I had a deputy superintendent who was very knowledgeable and strong in this area. Well, our deputy superintendent left, and then that person who did our climate and culture left. They went to actually work for City Connects, who's one of our partners. And so within, you know, two months, major leadership in this area disappeared. Well, that could have been catastrophic and set us way back, but we have a strategic partnership with the University of Connecticut, who have experts in this field. They initially stepped up and helped support, and there's a whole host of things that happened behind the scenes that make these programs work. They helped support us to make sure we kept those things going, as we then posted and began the process to hire new folks. Really happy that we were able to identify Dr. Williamson, who's a veteran principal from Worcester, whose dream job is to work on social, emotional learning in a school district. And she came and joined us, and we've actually improved and increased our capacity. So we were, it turned out to be a great growing experience for the district. The scaffolding or support that our partner provided allow us to continue to move forward and improve in those areas despite turnover. And that's a really important thing as we're building capacity and trying to keep moving forward. Because nothing is perfectly linear. I mean, there are going to be ebbs and flows and back and forth. But it's an example of how we continue to make progress despite, you know, disruptions that we face. And that happens in all these different areas. But you'll see that we've added curriculum, we've added leadership, we've added professional development, we've added technology in each of these areas, and that is improving the capacity of people to deliver high-quality instruction across the system. Super important. At the bottom, I added data systems because all of this is fueled by the ability to look at impact. For example, that ninth-grade group I keep talking about, in our data system, there's a tag for them so that I'm able to sort and say, I want to see the ninth-grade kids who have these support people. Is that making a statistical difference for that group? Like, does it matter? And we need to judge that because I've been very clear, if it doesn't matter, we will cut it. Because I'm not going to spend that money on something that's not making a difference. It's really important that we measure it and see if there's an impact, then we're going to keep going. If there's not an impact, we shouldn't spend the money. And that has to drive, and you need good data for that. So as we look here at some of the impacts I've mentioned earlier on, we have added program improvements that build this capacity. And I just want to run through them. And our social environment, that City Connects partnership, super important. It's added an adjustment counselor to every school. We now have at least two, if not three, adjustment counselors at every one of our schools and a City Connects counselor. So there's lots of social support services that exist in our schools. Super important with 90% high-need students in the middle of a pandemic, for sure. We've added an assistant principal at our high school. The strategy that we know has worked because we did it in our middle school is to have extra leadership capacity while you're in the middle of a change and restructuring of a school. And we are actively resetting the high school's social culture, much like the middle school effort that we have done in the past. I'm pleased to say, I was at the high school today, and, boy, things looked a lot better. You know, we're demanding no cell phones and no earphone buds and stuff like that. And kids have to pay attention, and they're making good progress on that. And that can be a battle. I know that some of you are teachers, so you can imagine how attractive that cellphone is when you're listening to someone talking about the Pythagorean theorem or something. You know, when you're a high school kid, that may not be the most exciting moment. So academically, we continue to have grade-two EAs in all of our classrooms. It's been super important throughout the pandemic. We continue to have our contracts with Hill for Literacy and Looney Math, this school empowerment network, that ninth-grade support program I talked about, additional reading teachers for our elementary schools. At ERS, we're still looking for reading folks. So if you happen to know a licensed reading person, point them our way. We'll match their salary if they work in the surrounding district. We want a licensed reading person. We've added a couple. Again, we're investing in that foundation. It's super important to get it right in pre-K1. Our dual-language program's now expanded up into sixth grade, and that classroom is phenomenal. Teacher is great. Really cool to see kids in sixth grade have been in dual language for, you know, six years now and being taught in Spanish and English. So that program has expanded. We've got now our integrated, integrated social studies and science curriculum underway at our elementary schools. Very briefly, we recognize we spend a lot of time on math and language arts and reading, but for kids to learn to understand reading, you first have to understand decoding words, but then you need to understand the references that all the words mean, right? What are they referring to? What's the sentence talking about? What part of the world? And so social studies and science become critically important for kids' reading comprehension, knowledge of the world. So we're working now, Mary Scripps X has been leading this work, but we're creating a curriculum that is integrated with our reading and our math series so that, and science. So our teachers don't have to figure out how all this fits together in a short time. There's only so much time in a school day. So a project-based learning in social studies and science, integrated with our literacy program, is on its way. We think it's going to be really engaging for kids. It'll be fun stuff, but it'll teach them about the world around them, super important for reading comprehension. Streamlining our staffing application process, we try to make it as easy as possible for people to apply. We don't want to lose people. And, you know, over the summer, we processed lots of people. I interview anyone who's going to be a licensed teacher, and when I was away for two weeks, Jose Ortiz filled in and did that work for me. But we think it's important that we meet every licensed teacher before they join the district and continue to do that. And so we have to have a very streamlined process to make that happen. Again, aggressive salary and signing bonuses have been a strategy we're using. We started in posting our anticipated vacancies in March. We have vacancies posted now that we actually don't have vacancies in, but we're looking for teachers anticipating that we'll have vacancies as we go into next year. I know that sounds a little convoluted, but we've been doing this long enough to know there are certain positions we're going to have turnover in. And so we're trying to align ourselves up for those December graduates because that's going to be the next class of teachers. I actually got a list of folks from out of state that we had people send emails to to try to recruit them, by the way. So we're doing what we can to get staff here, for sure, and we'll keep aggressively doing that. We are maximizing COVID-19 funding. We have a lot of DESI support funding associated with receivership. Chapter 70 has been generous for Southbridge. It is absolutely slanted to support districts with high-need students, and so that's where our increases definitely come from. And then, of course, we're seeking other grant opportunities. Very quickly, these are just screenshots from a couple of the dashboard systems. I had to be kind of careful in which ones I shared because these are live data. Typically, you'd be able to click on, say, attendance at by school, and I click on Charlton Street, the whole page would then reflect Charlton Street and all the different categories. It's really kind of neat. It uses Microsoft Power BI. So it pulls lots of data together. It's something that gives us the ability to analyze schools from a data perspective. It also allows us to see student-level data, so that's why I have to be careful and not use live screenshots for you because I can't share student data publicly. But it's a pretty powerful tool to begin to allow us to kind of picture and understand what's going on in a school. You can see grade-level attendance just by clicking a button. It doesn't require people to dig into reams and reams of paper. Our principals can click and see which grade level, you know, is the biggest problem. For example, I was having a conversation with Kelly Julino at ERS this morning, and her preschool has 88-point-something percent attendance. That's her lowest attendance group is preschool. And so then, now you know that, you can begin to do something and try to figure out what's going on with preschool. But these data are pretty powerful. And we have different ones that kind of break down. There's academics, there's attendance, you know, there are things from our walkthroughs for our climate data where we were able to utilize tools and then sit down with the leadership team and kind of tell them where it came out, and they can then analyze that. So these are powerful systems that are continuously under development and certainly helping us improve. Really impressed with the work of staff in applying for all these grants. And there's a whole bunch of grants listed here, and you can kind of go through them if you want. The big ones are the 21st Century After-School Programming Grants. This year, all these grants are going to be $1,004 of dollars brought into the district for after-school and before-school programming, for some high school internship opportunities for kids. There's a lot of really good programs listed here that are being funded from outside sources. You know, when I arrived, we didn't have before-after-school program. Now we have a before-school program at ERS that's giving kids chances to get to school early, settled in, and start their day on the right foot. Super helpful for a lot of families who are working and trying to figure out how to get that young kid into school. And then we're going to have after-school programming at every one of the elementary schools. We're seeing massive demand. Our funding allows for about 40 kids a school. We got to figure out a way to expand that because we have, you know, 80 people who want to go to these programs. They're definitely becoming quite popular. They're thoroughly now integrated into the schools, typically run by the principal of the school. It's going to make a difference. ERS got a huge grant from United Way, and thanks, special thanks to them for their support at ERS. $300,000 of money supporting that school's program over the summer and getting schools started in the right way this year. And they're helping to fund before-school programming. So there's a lot of really good things here. And these grants take staff a lot of time to write for. Like, they got to put in a lot of work and a lot of passion to get that. And, you know, candidly, I've been in districts where people are like, I'm too busy to write for grants, and that is not how this team works. They're always trying to get something. So very proud of the effort and work. We have one individual, Donna Zanelli, who writes 80% of these now. She's our science coordinator and a grant guru. So really, really proud of the work that they're doing. And just quickly, this slide is just a list of the school programming for 21st Century and mentions Eastford Road Before School Care Program, which is proving to be quite successful. So we're going to try to find ways to expand those if we can. So that is a boatload of information. I know you probably held your questions. I appreciate that, but I am happy to try to do my best to answer any that you might have.
I would like to thank all of you for holding your questions. This has been very informative, and I always feel that perhaps the next breath, he will answer your question. I know that Tim has a question that he held much to his chagrin. Tim, could you start the questions?
Thank you. Through you. So I have a few questions, actually. Sorry. So I was, first, I was curious, Wednesdays Every Day is professional development. I was curious, is that going to require extra days of school?
So it's been in place for quite some time. When we did it, we had to be very mindful of the impact on the number of hours. And clearly, it worked with the department to be sure that we selected the hour was kind of our limit. Our elementary schools actually have a long school day, so it was not even close there. At the high schools, we had to make sure that we didn't go under the mandatory requirement. But we are good. We're satisfying all-state requirements.
Super, super. My, to go along with professional development, you listed all of the partners. It's a half-day, so staff is in the building. How are they receiving this professional development? Is it through, like, Google Meet, Zoom? Is it, like, in Teams in small group settings, department-based?
Yeah. No, thank you for the question. Gives me a chance to elaborate a little bit, too. So some partners push in and work during the school day. Like, Hill for Literacy is often in our schools during the regular day, and they're going to team meetings, doing observations, sometimes coaching teachers. So it's not necessarily like, stop what you're doing, we're here. It's, we're going to be here with you while you're doing stuff. So it's, I think, better model. Same with Looney Mathematics, for example, in elementary schools. A lot of the Wednesday PD and some of our full PD days, which are in our calendar, there's six across the school year, are often tied directly to the principal, working with, say, one of these partners and a observed need of the school, right? Like, what does the staff need? As I think of the high school, like, they spent a lot of time this year on going through some culture priorities and even role-playing how to request certain things and, you know, drilling and practicing how to deliver instruction. A lot of that's led by the principal working with the school empowerment network behind the scenes. So they're meeting, supporting, sometimes giving the PD, sometimes the principal's giving the PD, sometimes the teacher's giving the PD. So there's a myriad of ways that it happens. It's not the same every time. There's a science of reading course that we provide to all of our elementary teachers. This can give you a college credit if you complete the full course load. That's typically delivered remotely, and they're given time and participated. I participated in it last year with the leadership team as well. You know, really rigorous, good stuff. You learn about all the new science behind how kids read. That was remote. So there's a lot of different ways it happens, trying to select what works best for what the content is and trying to balance these initiatives, you know, working on climate, culture, social, emotional, while you're doing literacy, while you're doing numeracy, like, there's a, particularly at elementary teachers, they touch everything. So it's hard to balance that. And so our leaders work real hard to, to make sure, like, we have an entire schedule for the full year of all of our PD already mapped out and all that stuff is, it's this giant spreadsheet. So everybody knows when people are coming, what partner's going to be on what day, so that it can be coordinated and maximized. It's taken a lot of, of work. I think of Catherine Seifert in Central Office killing herself creating these schedules and doing a phenomenal job. So that's how we manage that.
So I'm just curious, would it be possible to see that schedule?
Yeah, at some point, I can pull it up for you. You can take a look at it, for sure.
Awesome. I was curious, and maybe this is just something that you can send, I don't know, it was just something that I thought of while you were talking about the distinguished early career teacher, educator. I was curious if you knew how many people got that last year?
I want to say around six, I think.
Awesome.
It's off the top of my head, but it's a good number of teachers.
Awesome. And then I was wondering, how many teachers moved to advanced teacher?
Well, last year, I think we had five. A year before, we had none. The panel didn't settle on anyone. This last year, again, I think is about five. It could be six, but it's a good handful.
And then I was, I was curious about if you are given the recognition of being an advanced teacher. You were talking about having opportunities to participate as a leader in professional development. Would that be a requirement?
So we do make it known that there's an expectation that they're going to do above and beyond, right? We're now paying them substantially more money. If, for example, I should have added, if they were already making seventy-six thousand dollars, let's say they've been with us a long time, finally decided to apply and were recognized, there's a four thousand dollar stipend. Either way you cut it, it's a good chunk of change. So yeah, we do expect that they're going to add value. And sometimes people are comfortable saying, you know what? I want to be a model classroom, so send people in to see me do, you know, I'm really good at behavior-specific praise in my instructions. Send people in, and I'd be happy to let them watch me teach. That, that's something. They can go in and coach. Sometimes they're providing the PD, and they're, they're, like I witnessed at the middle school, where one individual was helping coach teachers and how to say, all right, now I want everyone's eyes on me here. Like, they have a drill, there's a whole procedure. It's, you know, professionalism. There's specific things that work really good when you're managing a class of kids. And so they, they were teaching their peers, because they had been recognized as being quite good at it.
That was my last question. Thank you.
I see some people in the audience. I'm going to let the school committee ask questions first, so if you'd like to just sit, I will recognize you. Do I have any other school committee people with questions?
I have a couple things. Every once in a while, I hear, all the smart kids have left. I personally know that's not true. Can you assure us of that?
Well, even the data slides I showed, you, you, there are percentages of the kids who are performing at advanced, right? So well above grade level. So they're students who are quite good at school, right? They're doing well at school, they assess well their learning. I, I personally would argue, there's a lot of ways that people are smart, so even kids who are struggling academically and may not test well have incredible skill sets. But if, if the definition of those folks are thinking of like kids who achieve high and do well on the state test or on rigorous tests, yeah, we have kids that do quite well. You know, a large number of kids who do well. They get lost in the noise. And, you know, one of the things I've been thinking about is we talk about the turnaround at Southbridge and this school committee, you know, contributing to the work, is people need to have faith in the schools. A lot of what's going on in social media is old news. People are talking about stuff that doesn't exist anymore in our schools. And when something happens, they immediately think it must be all that stuff that used to happen before. I can tell you that, like, that fire drill that we had last week, that could have happened in any school USA, but not any school USA would have handled it the way that high school, middle school did. They should be proud of how they handled it. That could have been a riot. I mean, literally, high school kids, like, you're making me go out in the rain? I mean, you know, girl's hair getting messed up, guy's worried about, like, it's a big deal for kids. And that didn't happen. And people should be proud of that. Like, hey, you know what? Your, your school had this crazy thing happen, and the reaction was quite appropriate. You know, kids and families did the right things. Teachers were great. You know, they were sopping wet most of the day. Like, that's leadership. And so people should be proud of that. And that's why I get, I get upset when I hear people dredging up stuff from six, seven years ago. It's just not the way it is anymore.
Okay, because one of the things I say also is look at, for some of the students who want to go on to college, look at some of the colleges that they have been accepted at. So another thing is the masking. Do you think this winter, you will want to have more masking, or it'll still be up to the, I know my grandson wears his mask every day. He has no problem doing that, and we're thankful that he does. And some of the kids still do, he said.
Yeah, yeah, I see kids in masks. I have staff members that wear a mask. It's a personal choice at this point. We allow it. We have a supply of masks to, you know, my standing order to my operations people are, we got to be ready. We don't know what's going to come. So let's not get too comfortable in, in the current circumstance. Who knows? We might be suddenly ordered, everyone wear a mask again, and I don't want to be like struggling to find masks. So I'm like, make sure you always have a supply of masks, hand sanitizer and stuff like that. We, we still have a large quantity of. We'll see, you know, what, what becomes of all this.
I did appreciate how you extended it at the end of last year compared to other places. I really did appreciate that.
Well, you're welcome. It was a collaborative decision. You know, the health department's been super helpful, and, you know, you look at data, right? And we were still in the middle of it. And, you know, we're trying to make schools safe for folks, you know, and having my own personal run-in with it is not fun. So we want to keep everyone as safe as possible. And so we'll see where it goes. I really hope that, you know, we have a much more normal school year. Kids need it, staff need it, but we're ready.
Thank you.
Andrew, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Taking a look at a lot of this, the referral data, talking about the middle school. I know that you, at, I don't know if it was right before the pandemic or coming back, we have the Student Support Center, where if there's a student that's providing or creating a disruption in the classroom or, or having issues, they, they can be sent to the Student Support Center to gather themselves or work through that. Are, is, if a student is sent, say, in second block to the Student Support Center because of behavioral issues, and they spend the rest of the day, because you give, at each period, you give the student the opportunity to be able to work through the issues and return back to the classroom. If that student stays the rest of the day in that Student Support Center, does that count as an in-school suspension?
Yeah, it would be. There's a time threshold.
Okay.
So the idea is you don't want them to be there that long. And I would say their practice is actually evolving. I think it's more effective in problem solving, so not to say the kids still don't end up an in-school suspension, because that's actually a very powerful motivator to change, you know, as a punishment, that's much more effective than out of school. Kids want to be with their friends. But yeah, for data reporting for the state, it's very important that we know the, the amount of time of exclusion, you know, because again, we're, we can't get better at academics if kids aren't in class. And so the whole idea is to keep kids in class, but they can't be in class goofing off. Right? So, you know, and the middle school's at a higher level than the high school for, for this request. Like, it's now like zero opt-out is kind of the mindset. Like, you don't get to sit in class and not be a participant in class. The teacher's going to ask you to contribute, and you need to contribute. And if not, then people are going to have conversations with you, like, why aren't you contributing? What's going on? And that's, it's a more supportive approach. It's demanding, but it's not, you're not, you know, participating, you're suspended. Like, that's so counterintuitive and not effective. It's what's going on? You need to, you know, it's good, you need to learn math, you need to be reading, these are our expectations, and they help them get there. So it, it definitely is working. Is it perfect? Of course not. But if a student spends a long time out of class, that'd be an in-school suspension.
All right. And I know that with looking at the school choice data, now, we having the downward trend from FY seventeen up to twenty-two, almost sixty students have decided to stay in district, but comparatively, how is that comparative to the declination of enrollment? Because I know our enrollment has kind of been trending downward, except for not, 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 not largely, but a slow downward trend. How is that comparatively speaking?
So as I think of enrollment, I think it's fluctuated from like two thousand to seventeen eighty-five or something and over the years, up and down. We had the hurricane, we got a bump of students that came that, that year. Yeah, I don't know that it's proportionate by any means. It's a good question to try to figure out how to parse all that out. But I think from a overall perspective, if, if we can convert it to a percentage, that would probably answer your question. I just don't know if the business office can do that or not, so. And I have my last question. When I see this slide, I'll remember it, because that's apparently how my brain's working today. Actually, you know what? I'm going to go ahead and call it. If I remember it, I'll come back. Thank you.
I have one question that you just reminded me of. Are we going to get a bump this year for the, from the hurricane? Or is it way too soon to tell?
I think it's too soon to tell. I know we, there's a group of people are going to be meeting to talk about our response to it. Obviously, we'll be ready and willing to take on students. There's no doubt about that. And if, if people decide to leave the island, we likely will get students.
Erin, do you have any questions?
Yes, let's see if I can remember my questions. So I know that we were talking a little bit about attendance and absenteeism, and do we know, is that specifically related to kids who are ill or kids who are staying home for other reasons?
We can actually look at the coding, and so there are times where we know, like, if a kid was COVID and they're COVID positive, they were required to isolate, you know, and all those rules have changed, like, so that's a moving target now. But yes, there's data that can tell us if it's an excused absence or not, but when you talk about chronic absenteeism, all absenteeism's on the table for that calculation. Like, there's really no excusing your way out of chronic absenteeism. What the state did is recognize that those numbers were going to be astronomical, and so they changed from ten to twenty percent for this year. That, that likely will not happen again, but we'll see.
So what you're basically saying is that if a student is missing over twenty percent of the school year, it's probably not due to normal, ordinary illness?
Not likely. Even if they had about a COVID, that's, you know, five, ten days, depending on, and it seems like for children, I've seen this with my own, that they seem to bounce back much quicker than their older parents. So just admirable quality of young people. So no, I don't think all of that is sickness. I think a lot of it is mental health for older kids and, and, you know, the challenge that the pandemic created a scenario where for a while, we had hybrid learning and secondary age kids were coming to school a few days a week instead of every day, and it was a lot easier to roll out of bed and log onto a Chromebook and turn your camera off and then get in trouble and have to turn your camera on. Like, all that stuff, that was a thing for schools for like a year and a half. And then kids had to come back into school, that, that was a big deal. And a lot of the high school age kids didn't seem to like it across the country. It seems to hit that group in many ways. And then I think there's also family impacts of, you know, one family member's sick, and then maybe other kids aren't going to school. And, and so there's that whole chain, and that's why our City Connects data system and getting that going is so helpful, because it starts to connect some of these dots. But yeah, I think there's a lot of things that create absenteeism, and illness is just one of them.
I was just hoping that we're not trying to push kids to be coming back to school if they really are ill, you know? That's not exactly the purpose.
No, and, and, you know, early in the pandemic, in the first year and a half, there were very specific guidelines, and we still have, Nurse Cheka is our lead nurse for the district, and her role is to continue to coordinate COVID response, and I have not relieved her of that obligation. Again, it's not really over. I know some people have declared it is, but I'm not convinced yet. And so she's still the person that staff members will contact. Like, I had to contact her, hey, I'm positive and I don't feel good, and she said, well, you can't come back to work until this date. And that's the rule. She gets to call it, and I had to listen to her, too. And so you don't want to, we didn't want a scenario where kids were coming and getting kids sick. And we actually had good data that showed we didn't have illness spreading across our schools in the middle of the worst time in this pandemic. I think largely, we had social distancing, we had masks, we had hand washing, and we had safety protocols that we followed very closely about sick people staying home. And so that all happened, and yeah, we still got absences from that, but that still doesn't describe all the other absences, right? So there's a lot of other chains to that.
Right. Another question that I had was regarding the dibbles?
Dibbles.
Dibbles, okay, thank you. Is there, do we have a data set like this from last year? And how would that compare? I don't know. I, I like seeing things side by side sometimes.
Yeah, so different cohorts of kids, but yes, we do have diff, you know, different years of data sets. No year, like, I have not seen a year where tremendous growth. A couple of years back, we had a hundred percent of our kindergarteners starting in the red, like, so there are years where, you know, cohorts are higher and lower.
Did you compare this with last year? Is there a, an overall trend?
So we don't have an overall trend, other than too many red at the end of the year, the way I describe it with folks. As far as like signs of improvement, yes, if you do some, some examination over years, there are some years where we've seen larger percentages of kids move, and that's what you're looking for. This past year, one of the, the things that we're most concerned about is ERS had like some of the highest absenteeism, and that's, you know, pre-K one, and that's for the foundational skills. And you miss that school year, it's pretty hard to move that along, and then it's going to impact the next school year. And that's what we're seeing there is multiple years of impact. That's why the kindergarten's like the best. We get the best growth, because that's the first stab at that group, but it should be higher. But yeah, so there are previous year scores. Nothing's dramatically different, nothing waving a flag of super success.
I'd be interested to see it, if that's something you'd be willing to just email us or whatever. I just, one of those, one of those people that likes those charts. And the same thing with the math. I would love to see like the previous year, how this would compare, because it's like you see the kids from the beginning of the year improving toward the end of the year. It would be really cool to see actually next year's data, which of course we don't have, but to see this improving even further over next year. Am I?
No, it's absolutely right. And as you're speaking candidly, for me, the gold standard is our MCAS, right? And so And so the Massachusetts test. And that test is the only test that we have access to that you can really do statistically accurate year-over-year growth analysis for students. And even that, as I speak, the 2021 results for growth scores are an anomaly and you can't look at them. But this year's growth scores will be able to be connected to 2020, 2018, 2019, all of those previous. So that test is designed to measure growth of students in those content areas year-over-year. And so that is the gold standard. I've said to folks, you know, people say, well, what do you need to see to get out of receivership? Well, in my mind, we need to improve on that, right? These are all important. These drive our teachers. But when the state is no longer embargoed, clearly we don't want to know, do we have any pockets of improved student growth? Do we have, you know, what percentages of kids are moving on the MCAS and language arts, math, science? Because that is a super high-quality test. These test results are really good for teachers. They help them understand where the kids are in the moment. But that MCAS is what you can use to compare across districts, across schools, across ages. Pretty heavy duty.
Another question that I had regarding the, I don't know exactly even what this stands for, RFP?
Request for Proposals. So it's a legal process for procurement. Because the contract is likely to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's a certain procedure in describing the work and giving companies an opportunity to apply, to be selected to do that work. It's very regulated process so that, you know, public funds are used appropriately.
I guess one of my questions regards the timing of that. It seems like whatever conclusion they come to, it's going to be a matter of we're going to need to come up with some money.
Yes, but it will be, it's a long process.
Okay, because my question is kind of, okay, if we're doing this at this point and then we get to the end of the process, I don't know how long the process is, maybe that would be.
It could be years.
Okay. Because it almost would be helpful if it did take years because then we'd be a little closer to maybe actually being ready to implement that as a town. Is that?
Yeah, as it kind of unwinds, there's stages. And so one is like the report on how to phase this. And there's information that we're going to need to have to be part of an application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And part of that application, there will need to be a local commitment to funding, right? So this cannot be done without town council being a hundred percent on board. And so this cannot be done in the vacuum. The report's just a first step. And then it's going to have to be a lot of dialogue and working with town manager and the town council and subcommittees, I'm sure, to kind of figure out the appropriate direction for the town. So yeah, unfortunately, it's a long process and we're likely to be funding capital repairs in the short term for a while until we can, you know, move this along. You know, I think it can be done. Once we get the report, we can try to get fast-tracked through the School Building Authority for approval. But it's still, I don't want people to think this is a quick process because there's a lot of hurdles.
Okay. My maybe last question, no, maybe second to the last question was kind of like what Andrew is asking, that we have, you know, this number of school choice students kind of going down and things like that, but that also our total enrollment is going down. So I was just curious to know whether you knew and maybe after hearing Andrew's answer, maybe I already heard what I needed to know. But are those students, that number that's going down, are they just moving away? Are, you know, what's happening to the students?
Yeah, I don't have detailed information from every family. It's, the business office has to keep track of kids who are attending school in other districts because there's tuition associated with it and the town's paying money out of, you know, for education for kids are going charter schools and different things. So they produced that report for me. So I'll have to talk to Mr. Racine if there's a way to get you more fine granular data on that.
I'm sure you have to send their records on to wherever they're going, right?
Yeah, that's one part of the process if a child is no longer enrolled here, is a record request.
That would be interesting just to know what's happening. And I think that's it, actually.
Of course.
Wally, anything?
I just have one question. What role will MCAS play this year, 2022, 2023? In number one, graduation? And number two, moving students from one grade to another grade?
So starting with the graduation, our current seniors are going to have to have demonstrated that they've passed the MCAS and that they would have taken it the first time several years prior. It is a state requirement for graduation. There are, you can bypass that through a long process. It's not easy, but that's the expectation. Our freshman class have a much higher bar for graduation. They've increased the requirements. So that's going to be very trying. And it's obviously a part of our investment in our freshmen. Like, hey, we got to really help this class of kids because their graduation requirements are significantly higher now on the MCAS. For our elementary age kids, MCAS does not play a role in moving from one grade to another. It's, there are states that have tests that require kids to pass. Candidly, those states do not perform anywhere close to Massachusetts on national and international testing. So their approach doesn't seem to work. But there are some that double down and you can only move to the next grade if you pass a certain test. The information in the test can be very insightful and revealing. I think it's more important to look at that information as you analyze the effectiveness of your educational system. It's a snapshot of where a kid was at that time. It's a good measure of where they were at the time they took the test, assuming they gave effort and they were feeling well. And there's a whole bunch of assumptions that have to go into that. They're well-constructed. It's good information. But the information like the dibbles and some of these other tests are far more powerful and helpful for teachers because it's information that teachers get through quick assessments with kids in classrooms in the moment. And they can answer a lot of questions like, did they try? They know, they know the kid. They start to understand, yeah, this was valid and this wasn't. And it drives instruction. So we use tests for different things. So I'm not displeased that we don't have a testing requirement to go from grade to grade. I don't know that that would be particularly helpful for our kids. But we do have a lot of kids that we have to close a lot of gaps with. And we're well aware of what those gaps are. And that's what assessment should tell you. You should know where kids are.
That's very good. And my other question that popped up, this certificate of attainment for the Southbridge High School, what exactly is that?
Well, that's a student who was not able to meet the full graduation requirement, like a testing requirement.
They get a certificate?
Correct. It's like seat time, you know, you put the time in. So obviously, that's not our goal.
Right, okay.
Sure.
Dr. Valar, when are the MCAS going to be available this year?
So the, we had an embargoed conversation today about statewide data. So I think Thursday is likely to be the big day.
Oh, is that soon?
And we should be sending out families, student stuff within a week or two. So it's all coming.
I had some people in the audience. Do I still have anyone from the audience who has any questions left?
One-twenty Maria Avenue. I'm also a Southbridge Town Councilor. Good evening, Dr. Valar. I hope you're feeling better.
Hello, thank you. I am, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I actually, I like seeing the data as it's coming out. My interest is in capital planning. And on the town council, this last year, the council chairman formed an ad hoc capital planning committee. And I was the chairman of that committee. And we came up with some ideas for going forward and how we do our capital planning. In the past, what the council used to do was wait till the end of the year, fiscal year. How much money do we have? What can we buy? So we decided that that wasn't very good planning. So what we decided to do is come up with a better plan, whereas we are going to try and look at what we need and then try to find funding for our capital plans. That, in our opinion, is a better way to do capital planning. We, one of the things that we did form, came up with was a capital stabilization account. And we are starting to fund that now. So since then, the council chairman has decided to form a permanent capital planning committee. And we have several members already on the committee, which I have been appointed to the committee. We are just waiting for you to appoint somebody from your staff to our committee. We would really like to work with the school in getting a sense of what your capital needs are, what our capital needs are, so we can plan ahead and don't wait and not wait till the last minute. So as soon as you can send us somebody, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, I have good news for you. I actually sent an email to Karen Herneus this afternoon, appointing John Parent. He's our technology coordinator. He does a lot of our capital purchases, to be my primary representative. And I've also pledged, you know, when necessary, of course, I'll participate too.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Do I have any other questions from the audience? Any other questions from our committee? Dr. Valar, I'd like to thank you. I truly believe this was the best presentation that we've had. Good questions from the committee, good answers from you. I thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Any other issues? Hearing none? Can I, yes, sir? Oh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? If you moved in second, we're adjourned.